...with our consistent construction inspection. Someone saying that, no, we're not going to accept this. These pipes need to connect, we won't accept it. As a matter of fact, we'll issue you violations and fines if need be until you correct the problem.
Yeah. And we need to address how they're going underground.
Correct. So...
Do you have repair standards too?
No, sorry.
That's right.
Well, so, but then, back one slide.
Yes.
So, tomorrow, do we have anything in place to prevent that from being done?
No, we don't.
No?
We're working feverishly to get that.
We have, we have...
Guess when we have time, we're gonna look over that.
Yeah.
Within the next few months.
This is what we have.
So, we're...
I mean, I'm not trying to be sarcastic at all, that's really what we have.
So Dennis is working to put the final touches on this. Where also, we have a contract pending with a firm to do the construction inspection. We are working to get this in place ASAP.
So I guess, so Millbridge is still building out.
Right.
Correct.
So, a fourth of it's done. The three, the other three quarters, there's no, this has not been done yet.
That's correct.
But if they started doing this tomorrow, we have nothing to prevent them from doing this tomorrow.
But Bob...
That's correct.
What we have is construction inspection in place.
Um, construct, as a full program, that, that, I would not...
He isn't saying...
I would say at least that's a 90-day deal, at least. At least.
There's, there's another problem too. When you get to this stage in your repair, you can never put it in the condition that you could've put it in during the new construction.
Right.
And you're going to have a second failure sooner than you...
He's gonna, he's gonna bust the next...
Yeah.
And I want to bring up something that Natalie actually touched on very early on. Once we are aware of the issues, that some of the solutions to these problems aren't quick fixes.
Right.
And so, it's, we can get certain things in place, but there's a catch-up piece that we're, we're gonna have to, have to go through. And that's, I think, just probably one of the biggest observations or things I've had to come to, to my own sort of kind of agreement on, that some of these things are gonna take some real time. And, and that time is not really measured in weeks. That time can be measured in months and years, by the way.
Early on, though, you mentioned land rights. So if we were, you know, implement today, a program, could you take that to Millbridge and say, hey, the rest of it's gotta be built under this?
On certain...
Or don't bother building it.
If they didn't, if their approvals did not have specific construction standards attached to them, probably so. But if their, if their approvals had very specific construction standards attached to them, now we could... So as an example, Prescott Village had a set of road design standards on it. If we didn't like that now, we couldn't impose new road standards on it. Because that went with their land entitlement.
So we're not sure if Millbridge does or not?
On all of it now.
But frankly, it mostly comes back to inspection enforcement. Because I've read DOT standards, they're pretty strict. I've read the state erosion control standards, they're pretty strict. If you had the authority to inspect, you could enforce those standards today, even without Waxall having it's own. It's just no one's ever chosen to enforce them.
And you, and I would add, you need, you need resources.
Yes, absolutely. There's no question.
Human resources.
One of the things that Morrisville does, and I think some others do, actually Charlotte doesn't too, is you can't get a CO for, for your homes or for building and occupying until you do certain things related to your infrastructure. So there's a, that's a, and I'm not, there may be some legal implications in how you kind of manage that, but that would be a definite incentive for folks, you're not gonna get COs.
That's a pretty standard practice.
And that, that has probably been the biggest downfall for us, that we give COs regardless of what they put in the ground.
And I think, and I think a lot of how other municipalities have gotten there, is that they've said, you're, you're, the public's health and safety doesn't stop at the occupancy of the house, it's how you're also getting to that house. And so, I think that's how we got some of that whole occupancy permit. So real quickly...
Well, a lot of that gets back though to Brenda's point, that none of this stuff's been updated since 2009. Because they were, as you were trying to recover from the recession, we were taking $500 a house, build the house, we'll give you a CO, and the town will come back and build, take care of the road. And that's, that's where a lot of this stuff started, the town started to take on, whether we knew it or not, the ownership of the problem.
So, real quickly, just some, some observations. This is new storm drain pipe that's being basically laid on uncompacted earth, and also being backfilled with some of the rock that was, um, you know, that was, that was semi-figured out. As you can imagine, that's, that's not good construction practices.
Because they dug that out, because we saw them put it in, but I know as soon as we left, they probably went right back to their old ways.
Yeah, so this is, this is, this is a storm, uh, stormwater, a storm drain grate, excuse me, a catch basin that was, um, built at the wrong elevation. So they put some cinder blocks underneath the earth. And I, again, really kind of standard practice.
They shimmed it.
And they had a problem with it. Show the next slide of the box.
They, they shimmed it, is, is what I heard.
So that'll be as good as long as the cinder block's good.
Well, as long as the cinder block's good. And then also the location. So they put the, those catch basins, basically, on the high side of the road.
That's why another match up.
Yeah, so water, and these, these, these guys right here, which are the same, should've gone in the west box.
Is this part of the marketing campaign for Millbridge?
So, but, so as a funding thing, can we pass the cost of this on to the builders? Even though I understand that it has a global picture, it's not all their fault.
Well, we can say we won't accept that infrastructure until they fix it.
But they fixed another pipe. There's a thing called pipe patch.
Right. But in essence, right, but in essence, that's a way of passing the cost. Always say, we're not gonna accept that as public infrastructure until you fix it.
But, but if we saw that today, though, we can stop with what that small document is, we can still say that's not gonna fly.
Not, not really.
I can tell them we don't like it, but there's nothing saying that they can't keep doing it.
It doesn't really do, it doesn't have any, it doesn't have any detail from what's, what are the alternatives? What are our standards?
So, so let's not think about, think about Anklund Forest, think about pieces of Prescott, think about, uh, Curriton. Folks that have already moved into these developments, living in homes, paying taxes, thinking that the town is maintaining their street, their sidewalk, their curb and gutter, their stormwater, and we're not, because we don't own it. So, and we have nothing to go back to, to make the developer get this infrastructure in the way it should be, if there's something wrong with it. So now, it's a policy decision amongst the board members, okay, at the end of the day, whether we like it or not, so you got two choices. At the end of the day, whether you like it or not, this is, this is town infrastructure, we're gonna take it over and we're gonna maintain it. Or, you play hardball and say, I'm sorry, property owner, you're gonna continue to pay your taxes on, for the development that you built into, and we're not gonna take any of it, because it wasn't put in right.
Now, there is where we take it.
And that's a tough, I mean, that, that's a tough decision. That's just like the trees we talked about earlier.
There's a bond on these roads, but there's not enough to cover all the repairs.
Which is why a lot of municipalities hold the, hold the occupancy permit, so...
They can't make money until they get their COs.
You can't get into a house. So I ain't gonna let you get into a house until all this is fixed. And that's how, that's how those home builders are making their money. And so they, they then become very motivated to get those problems fixed, because they're trying to sell those houses. But right now, you can get your occupancy permit and the infrastructure, maybe not, the public infrastructure is not...
Are you going to get to a point in your presentation where the inspection process is by a third party, and that third party ends up certifying into the town? So that, that...
Maybe about three, four slides, maybe.
Okay, I'll take mine.
Did you have a question, John?
But then that gets back to the point, though. So, the Prescotts, the Quellons, the Anklund Forest, what it's gonna come down to is, I guess, is taxpayers, do you, well, how do you want to spend, how do you want us to spend your money? Do you want a swimming pool on the street in front of your house, or do you want a new park?
Exactly. Because this, what's happening here is, so we're working something else into the equation that was never part of the equation before. So we talk about, okay, we're gonna go out and build new parks, and build new facilities, and build new this and that. Then along comes this, uh-oh, we're gonna have to go back and spend money. I mean, that's, again, that's a board decision, but potentially, we could, we're gonna have to spend money to get infrastructure up to standards that wasn't put in correctly on the front end.
Because that is a quality of life issue.
Well, it's a, it's a...
And I, and John, I would venture to say that the town probably doesn't have, have put enough documentation to, to know for some of these places in Prescott. We took out $500 and let them build the house. We'll take ownership, we'll, we'll handle the road. There's no mechanism to turn the road over to the town. The citizen, that has no clue. And if there's a sinkhole there, you think, you think we got a leg to stand on that says we can't fix it?
One of the...
Nobody knows how. I mean, and I don't know what, I, I don't know, what works, what doesn't...
You turn around politically, and you say, the people that have been living here all their lives are extended, like, you know, 30-plus years from me, and all, you know, so what? We have to pay for all the new guys.
Exactly.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. You're gonna have, you're gonna have the screaming masses coming saying, I don't have a water problem, why should I pay for...
Well, that, that was my point earlier.
John and Danny on the street.
I mean, there's tons of neighborhoods that, I mean, when it rains deep in my neighborhood, I've got kind of similar to that, but it's all with the creek, because it's one area.
So, look, everything in blue, for the most... Everything in blue is what we're talking about.
It's got 50 feet down.
Blue, blue are private streets, green are pub, are town streets, red, DOT streets. I know Ms. Stewart and the mayor went down to the preserve of Forest Creek, you heard their issues.
Yeah.
They wanted, they wanted street signs and stop signs and...
Street lights.
Not our, not our street. And we're gonna tell them, yeah, you're gonna have to keep paying your taxes, but we can't help you out on anything, you know, related to your street. I mean, those are tough, those are tough decisions. We're gonna have to do two things.
They never intended that to be a public, uh, public, this town street.
Well, they got...
Yes. Yes. They were always set up to be a town street, but the guy went bankrupt.
So look, so we got Lawson, we've got Curriton, Anklund Forest, um...
Those are good, that they're blue.
Prescott, the blues, the blues are the, basically the streets we're talking about to Lawson Creek. Uh, but anyway, so that's the, that is, it's, I've never, this is a Palbeau map, the percentage of private streets that Waxall has, I've never seen anything like them.
Let's not leave out Waxall Parkway.
Well, Waxall, we don't know who's in this.
It's all private.
That is...
Let's go to Marvin, though. They're all private.
Exactly. But they're private by design.
Right.
And so what we're gonna run into are folks that think that they are, you know, they're paying their taxes for the town to maintain their street, and their streetlights, and their curb and gutter, and their sidewalks, and all that, and, and it's...
So, so, so again, are we putting the cart before the forest we don't even own, to go with this, when we probably should get a grasp on everything? You know, what, what don't we own? You said the ones in blue. What's the expectation that we own them? And what does it take to own them at that point?
It'll last longer. Assessment of...
Yeah, I mean, sure, sure. And that's, that's a part of what, a part of what the, the whole street conservancy program is gonna be about, is figuring out what do we currently have, what's theoretically going to be ours at some point, and then understanding the condition of, of each of those streets, and assigning a certain level of cost to making whatever necessary repairs need to be made.
So we will bring you information, we will bring an assessment forward on that infrastructure to give you an idea of the scope and scale of what we're looking at. Which was actually part of the, your, your goals and objectives that you adopted. I mean, that was something you knew you wanted to do. So you'll be, you will be seeing that coming forward.
Well, it's generally accepted or understood, though, that if it's in any kind of limit, in North Carolina, it's a town street.
Well, the DOT has a street, but, but in this case, the expectation is, where the wheel, I mean, again, it's a board decision, but the expectation is those are gonna be town streets. Those are residential streets.
And again, you go knock on any of those blue street door houses, say...
They don't own it.
Right. But they expect that that's a town street.
And it also causes issues with the police department on enforcement for these streets that, that aren't ours. Um, you've got, you've got school buses riding on roads that we didn't, you know, we didn't inspect. I mean, I don't wanna, you know, scare people, but, I mean, there are potential public safety issues there with the way we have done things.
Or not done things.
In Little Park, Corvus, and private street.
If we get out of here, we're gonna take a, take a tour and show you some of it.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
This may be pretty true, but if this is in your recommendation that you're gonna include, how many employees? That, that would be needed to, additional to implement this and the, and the RML?
Right. Correct. So there are multiple ways that you can do this. A lot of, a lot of municipalities have their own inspection staff, own employees. Um, I've tried to view this through the lens of what may be the most efficient to get us up and running. And so what I recommend to Warren is a third-party inspection approach, where we're not taking on a new employee, but we're building into our development permit fee model, a fee for construction inspection, that a developer would be required to pay. And that fee, we would basically manage that payment to a third party, and that they would go out and inspect the, the infrastructure that we're gonna be asked to take over, but, but they would develop standards along with the town, on what we want inspected, how we want it inspected. Now, for, for items that are already out there, not developer-related, there would be, in my opinion, some level of cost that we as a town would, would need to incur to have an inspector go and check, you know, some of that stuff as well. So, so that wouldn't be built into a fee model.
And to give you...
With the third-party approach, now definitely the turnkey overnight with a policy in place done, without any problem.
That's correct. So that's like, we're up and running. And so, so then, most likely, in a subsequent year, you may see a recommendation that we take on a, a new, actually inspector, a full-time employee, but you'd see that through the lens, or through the, the communication channels that Warren's saying, all right, we've had something in place, we have enough volume of work to justify a request for an additional position, and he would go through whatever kind of request process that goes through.
So we looked at the town of Holly Springs outside of Raleigh, bad, very similar to Waxall, high-growth suburban, uh, Morrisville, not...
Not Morrisville.
Morrisville outside of Raleigh. Holly Springs in an engineering division has 19 employees that manages stormwater, sedimentation, erosion control, construction inspection. Holly Springs has 19, Morrisville has 12. We got dense, which is equivalent to 12.
So this is based on the...
Well, that, that just gives you, that just gives you a feel for the degree to which we have a lot of catching up to do.
Okay. So it wasn't based on size, or streets, or...
Those two, pricking those two jurisdictions, yeah, are just very, yeah, similar to, they're larger than us, they're simp, they are similar to us in a high-growth area outside of, outside of a local major city, Raleigh. Similar demographics, similar types of development, highly residential. So, and they've been at this for years, and we're just getting at it.
To give you an idea, Holly Springs is roughly 14 square miles, and we're 12.
If they're a little more dense, hopefully.
They are. Yeah, they're about 13 miles. But, but keep in mind, even Holly Springs and Morrisville are not seeing the, they're seeing a lot of growth, they are not seeing the percentage growth that we're seeing.
Right. So, I won't, I won't spend too much time on pictures unless you want me to, just to give you a sense of some of the issues that are out there that, in my opinion, are correctable via consistent construction inspection. This is a sinkhole that opened up, I think, three times underneath someone's driveway. This, this occurred maybe late November, if I'm not mistaken. And so, Todd, he and his group did a lot of good work to try to get that problem solved, but I'm just getting a sense of kind of type of issues. Again, pipe separated, sediment starting to hit the tree, deck with pipe, so... So just real quick, let me take a, like, the informal survey of what everybody sees. Like, what's your reaction when you see this picture? Thoughts? Just what comes to your mind, your brain?
You take care of it driving over.
Careful?
Driving over.
Why would you say that?
Because the, the underbridge is not safe.
Okay, underbridge, I see.
I, I know what an underbridge looks like, and that's a hood ornament.
I don't.
Okay, so it's a hood ornament. Hood ornament, okay. What else? What else, anybody say?
Anybody ever inspected?
I don't know. What was, I don't know what, what, what were the design...
That stays a private bridge.
That's the point.
That, that's a steel bridge, right?
Well, we're, we're gonna be asked to, we're gonna be asked to take that over.
I know.
We're, we're kinda being asked a little bit already, but...
The school buses drive over there?
Mm-mm. Because it's private.
So, yeah, things come about, I wonder if the design requirements that were applied to it, who's gonna ultimately maintain that bridge? What does it take to maintain that bridge structurally? Uh, I'm not really sure what structural load rating is on it. I don't know any of that type of information. But it does connect, uh, what I believe are two streets that, that that particular subdivision or neighborhood are, are gonna ask the town to take over or something like that.
Give you a heads up, they want us to take it over now.
Right. So a lot of this, we can breeze through pretty quickly, because we've covered it already, but the purpose of this slide was just to show, you know, where are our standards, what are our standards from that same document I passed around? It says, hey, designing construction standards shall be in accordance with the town Waxall UDO. So I went to the UDO and said, well, what are our design and construction standards? I found some in the subdivision section of the code, that was about two or three pages worth. Didn't find too much more past that. And so, we've already kind of said where we're going, but it's really from what I'll call a more planning-level document to something that can be implemented. So we're, we're moving from, we've looked at a lot of pictures, if you move to the far right, grab my laser pointer on this, kind of pop-up note or whatever. We've, we've gone through an assessment phase to a certain degree in this presentation with the pictures. Uh, we're kind of moving from something that is planned out to more of the implementation phase of what we can actually require folks to build. And this has a great amount of detail in terms of our requirements around construction and performance.
So just so you know what you're looking at, the pre-picture...
From the downtown code.
That, yeah, that's our, that's our standard for, okay. So, versus where we need to go in the bottom side. And you want to talk the conversation we had the other day, um, from an engineering, mathematical perspective versus...
Sure. Sure. So, so the way that, the way the current downtown code is set up, it leaves really no flexibility or, um, it leaves no flexibility to, to vary any of these dimensions based off of the true performance of that criteria. Excuse me, true performance of that process, as an example. I can't tell you that as well as the biotest, there's the appropriate stormwater management feature.
So basically, it's the artsy, pretty of price versus the practical engineer of price?
That, that's part of it, absolutely. But also, the way the code reads today, it says, if you were, had a certain zoning district, you absolutely have to build this. Well, you may find out that you don't have enough water to get anywhere close to filling up a 12-foot ditch.
Near the top of the hill, you don't need it.
Near the top. Or, do you want to connect an open-dip system into a closed storm drain pipe system? Well, you don't have any of that flexibility right now with the turn code. In order for you to do that, it would have to go back through the board for a vote to say whether or not they could do anything other than a, than a biotest.
And let me tell you why this is, this is important from the way this gets introduced. So now you've got staff who, who recognize, or have, potentially would have recognized that this is wrong, that this is what's in the book. And the safe thing for me to do as a staff person, so I don't put myself out there and stick my neck out, is to do what the book says, because nobody can come back and get me if I'm, if I live in my book. Whereas Dennis comes along and says, now what, from an engineering perspective, I mean, this may give us a product that is completely dysfunctional and ineffective. So I've directed him, if he, if he can, from his engineering perspective, from, and being able to put his seal on something as a professional engineer, can say, this is a better way of designing this, even though it's not what the code says, that this is the way, from a functionality standpoint, this needs to work. I have said, okay, you, if you can do that, then you go with that. Now, that puts in need, it puts me in jeopardy, because that's not what the board adopted. But it, but it's gonna give us a product that's functional versus potentially something that's gonna be dysfunctional until we can get all this fixed. But, but that's where organizational culture comes in. If we're sta, if we're scared to stick our neck out and do the right thing, because our, our heads will get chopped off, versus, okay, yeah, that from a, you know, I'm, I can live with that, because that makes sense, and that's gonna give us a product we want. It's creative, it's innovative, it's free-thinking. That's, that's why we have to have that kind of flexibility in our environment versus just staff looking off of, looking off of a code that really doesn't function the right way.
But this, if that gets back to the thing we gave you direction on, though, when we were doing the UDO rewrite and all that, is pick out the things that are wrong, bring them to us, and we'll approve them.
Yeah.
I mean, provide, we understand them.
Yeah.
But that way, you're not in violation of what we've approved, or the previous boards approved, or whatever.
But the reality is, the board shouldn't even approve. This should be a staff-level...
Right.
Yeah, I mean, this is too, this is rocket science. I mean, this is not something that even, that I'm, that I am capable of doing, that, that maybe Jim is, but, because he's the engineer.
We're not a highly engineered...
But, uh, this is something that really lends itself, lends itself to a staff-level type document.
And so, I'll give you a real, I'll give you a concrete example. If someone's trying to develop on this side of the street, and they're asked to put in a varies, a sidewalk of a specific dimension at a very prescribed location, if that sidewalk runs you into, if it ends at the face of a, of another building, if we were to let that get built, I think we'd get criticized, or who allowed that to happen? That doesn't make sense. And I think other, a lot of people would say, why don't you just meander the sidewalk around the front of the building once it gets to the conflict point? The way that the current code's set up, there's, there's none of that flexibility. In order for someone to say, hey, Dennis, is there a way, once I reach a conflict point, to move my sidewalk from 12 feet down to 10 feet away from the road, so that I preserve a really nice tree? Or so that I don't build sidewalk adjacent to a building? Or sidewalk adjacent, but directly in conflict to a building? Technically, I can't say you can do that. What I can say is, you need to take that through the board as a request for board action to allow for that deviation of this very prescribed standard.
So then, how do we adjust that very prescribed standard to allow that to happen?
So you're, you're... You'll see in the next month or two, a, in the interim period, a, a text amendment, that, that request, some language around flexibility to address these types of issues, provided that it's rooted in some sort of criteria, and it's not just staff being willy-nilly with how we're making decisions.
Is that based on any care, or is this specifically to downtown business district?
This is, I'm sorry, the top one?
Yeah.
No, what, what you just said, about the tax...
About the flexibility part.
It, it would, it would apply to the entire downtown section of the code as it relates to these street...
The business district?
And all of it.
I'm way short.
Downtown section of the code.
The NMX, the MX, which, all of it.
So there's some...
Coming up to the planning board next month. But it says, and the flexibility, I don't need an administrator, not the town engineer.
Okay, we can, we can scrub the language.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's what I looked at today before.
Okay.
Just, it's, it's always bothered me, the board's group, there's no seals or stamps on anything they propose, or, or, they draw my pictures.
We not only have it with that part of the UDO, but we have it in the rest of the town, because the lollipop sheet lot out by the, the round top.
Yep.
They couldn't do this because they, all they wanted to do is to curb, didn't wanna do curbs of gutter, they just wanna have gutter.
They wanna have ditches.
And we don't, we don't, we have no UDO for ditches.
This standard here came out right out of the DOT textbook. I mean, hunters will put your name on it, but that is a DOT.
Right.
It's a 11-by-7 sheet out of their book.
Yeah. And that's only a small part.
Right.
Of the standard. Standard's gonna describe what's under it.
Standards is thick enough.
This is what's under it, type of material, how thick it needs to be, if there's some other notes. Actually, this graphic is, is pulled out of the document sitting in front of us.
So, so far, what Dennis has laid out, said, okay, we've got some issues that, that we're gonna have to deal with out there. Now, moving forward, we're gonna get all that fixed, so we don't have, we don't continue to have these self-inflicted wounds moving forward, since we got new standards, new programming in place, which is gonna take money, um, and some resources, but that's... And, and then, at the end of the day tomorrow, we'll be thinking about, okay, your vision, mission, values, strategic initiatives, how everything we're talking about today might change or require some sort of tweaking to what we have in place related to those things.
So, so just so I'm clear with the rest of the board, though, we gave direction to do just this, find the problems, and bring us an answer to fix them so we can close the gap.
This is an attempt to do it.
Okay.
If it's the town engineer, I'll find them. And we're, we might even need to have that after the UDO's in place, because there are conditions that are gonna happen downtown that no one had a four-foster to catch.
But this is a little bit of a, this is a pretty significant shift away from, from the board, because all these sorts of things have been controlled at a board level previously. Now, it's, some of it's, to some degree, you have the broad policy level still being controlled by the board, a lot of the implementation. And I know there's a balance there, you can't go beyond, but, but that's a little, that's a shift from where we, the way we've done things.
But that goes back to Steve's earlier this morning, uh, chart, graph, whatever, staff level versus, I mean, it's just common sense. That's why we have staff, that's why we have professional staff.
There's only one engineer in the room, that's the answer. There's only one civil engineer.
I'm gonna put CD. I know what it means.
Why do now? I just want clarification.
We won't spend really any time, we've touched all of this quite far. Uh, just very quickly, uh, switching gears a bit to kind of this broader topic, transportation planning and traffic engineering. We talked a lot about, kind of, transportation, it's generally, um, it's generally the number one or two topics on the public's mind, I think, a lot of times, public safety being the other one, but, but safety and, and, and transportation usually the top two items that you'll hear out of any community that works really on their mind. We've already gotten through the TIA, uh, adoption process, so we do have a warrant for, for moving that forward. Along kind of the similar lines, I just identified a warrant that, you know, we currently don't have, uh, our own town driveway regulations. So if you wanna get a driveway to a, a street here in town, NC DOT has requirements, but we currently don't have any of our own requirements and quite frankly, don't issue a permit. One of the ways in which we can help get new infrastructure in place that could alleviate some of the traffic, specifically turn lanes, is, is through our own driveway regulations, issuing a permit that says, hey, we are signing off as a town, the driveway that you're requesting is in a location that we're okay with, and quite frankly, you've built enough infrastructure to handle the traffic that's coming in and out of your, out of your use.
And the law requires us to have a driveway permit process, or no?
It, 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 it doesn't. It gives us the authority to enact, excuse you, well, yes, it does. So it, it's, it's, it's unlawful for anyone to have a curb cut to a public street without getting properly...
Okay, so add, add that one to the list of mandated requirements that, and we already know about one or two others, but, so there's another one that needs to be corrected.
If, if there is a curb, we have...
Well, well, the, the, the turn, the curb cut, um, it's, it's, it's really intended to mean an access point to the public street.
Yeah, there's a street down on South Perum, a fellow decided, Phil, that did put a culvert, you know, 30 feet long. I asked Greg about it, and he said that was illegal enough, because everybody, it was building.
Right, that's, I call it renegating. That's not permitted, that's renegating.
We never enforced it.
So, this, this particular document will lay out some of the enforcement language as well, like what happens if you do, do just that. I mean, there, there are fines that we could, we could actually issue, things of that nature. We could actually, as a town, rip out that driveway. And charge the, charge the property on there if we so choose it.
Where do you see an exposure at, uh, on that right now, in the town?
Well, I, I see it, I see it along 16. So we rely on NC DOT to issue the driveway permits to 16. And more or less, say, well, kinda whatever they require, we're generally gonna say that's covering us. Well, NC DOT could have some very different, um, opinions, values around driveway locations, what are the appropriate infrastructure requirements associated with them. And so we're kinda at the will of NC DOT as a, instead of saying, what are our values? So in addition to you meeting whatever the requirements are for NC DOT, since you're getting a driveway within the town limits, we're gonna impose our own regulations on it.
Okay, so that, that's what I was getting at.
DOT don't live here.
But, but in that in particular instance, the DOT has to recognize our driveway standards.
That's correct.
That's, that's what I was getting at.
But that is not uncommon for them. That is a model that they are familiar with, so it's, it wouldn't be known.
The next time you drive up Highway 16, look at all the developments that have gone, and some of which are gated, that have no turn lane, no improved, no real improvements have been made, that negatively impact the folks from Waxall traveling to Charlotte. So, in your legislative priorities...
Waxall Marvin, Waxall Marvin would be another exposure area, so you could treat them very similarly.
Yeah, so, and, some of these are gated communities, that they didn't require them to do any sort of improvement, yet when somebody is stopping to turn, it is impeding the traffic for everyone else. So, if, when we think about legislative priorities, somehow we have got to engage the DOT to say, you gotta help us out because you're killing us with these new developments that aren't required to put any infrastructure in, anyway.
Yeah, yeah. So, currently working on that, I will, I'll have a draft document completed, um, this fiscal year. I intend to share that with Warren and other town staff to get feedback, and then, I, you know, that makes it kinda forward as a recommendation from Warren, you'll, you'll see that document as well.
Does the state recognize that, Warren? As far as understanding that now from Waxall to 485, there's 15,000 cars a day going versus...
They, 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 they recognize that. I would say this kind of, I, I don't know where, where to put this in terms of a category, if it's philosophical, or, I don't know what's the appropriate word, but earlier, you know, when the mayor mentioned something about the NPO and, and they're surprised that we're interested in transportation planning, it, it, it's very similar with NC DOT. Like, if, if we're not gonna stay on top of them as this being issue items, they're not gonna, they're not gonna stay on top of the issue.
Their plate's overflowing.
Right, their plate is, is probably more full than ours if you really start to look at what they're having to do. And so, I think it becomes incumbent upon us to, to make our case and to make it consistently. So, yeah, we make it once, it's like, hey, we're gonna follow up with you, what, what's happening, what can we do? Who do we need to meet with? Do we need to drive the Alboral, meet with our division folks? Can, who do we need to meet with? And so, it's a, it's a consistent, in my opinion, business case, for lack of a better word, why is this important? And, 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 and there's different ways to communicate with the state, because, you know, they have a commerce end of things as well, that you say, how, how is this affecting the economic development? Well, that's not really gonna be handled through a DOT lens, but it can be handled through the state and some of their other interests that they're supposed to be protecting as well, so.
Yeah, and tied to that, a lot of times, the question that they're, he's subtly getting is, does your elected body support what you're bringing forward at the technical level? And if we're not participating, the implication is, thank you, Dennis, but no.
Right.
Yeah, that's...
We, we need to, we need to start looking after our interests, e, even outside the town limits. I mean, obviously, four-laneing 16's gonna be a ways off, but the next best thing is turn lanes at key points.
I would agree. And if you think about, kind of, turn lane functions, left turn lanes help, but I'll, I'll tell you what turn lanes are also, the right turn lanes on 16 help as well. What they're doing subtly is building out a four-lane 16. And when these projects are getting ranked for funding, we're now submitting less expensive projects to the people we're asking money for because we're requiring developers to shoulder some of the burden that they're ultimately creating for the impacts that they have on the, the public infrastructure. So, you know, when people are looking at the projects, they're like, man, this is a $20 million project, but if we, if we're consistently requiring developers to kinda pay their fair share, for lack of a better term, that $20 million project, over time, may turn into a $12 million project because we got eight million worth of infrastructure built as the development was coming online. And that makes it a more favorable project to get funded.
But the DOT isn't requiring that, then we've missed an opportunity in having the private sector really fund some of these improvements.
And we don't have our own driveway regulations in place that would say what the requirements are. Within the town, so. Still good? Okay, I'm gonna pass out some documents real quickly.
You never answered my question.
I was answering your question.
You never answered my question.
Which question was that?
About the, the why in the park and, do we have an opportunity? You said it was 10 slides and I counted 12.
Could you, could you ask the question again? Because you get a lot of questions.
Yeah, you are. I asked the question, is, with the why coming in, with, with us building the park, do we have an opportunity on our development standards to get in front of that? So we're not impacting negatively 12 mile per...
Yes. We did.
So you didn't have 12 slides, but you're just gonna give me a yes? I'll, I'll accept your answer, because you're the only expert.
Yes, we did. Well, I mean, quite frankly, the, the, the why hasn't been permitted, we haven't seen construction documents, we can have things in place that would pass those documents. Dennis's kind of assessment of this broader topic of, of infrastructure. But topically, a lot of these things haven't been with the board specifically, it's said, look, so I'm, I'm telling Warren, in order to meet what I think is a very specific goal of the board, here are a lot of things I would recommend that we... So that's, that's the policy level. So kind of lighting scheme here, um, at a high level, very high level, I recommend we have one document that lists all of the thoroughfares that are important to Waxall. Currently, we have...
Right.
Five documents, four of which should be in front of you right now. Okay? And so, the four that are in front of you, you have a document that was done in 2009 via the LR, LARTP, that, that, that's a good document. You have a NPO thoroughfare plan, Metropolitan Planning Organization Thoroughfare Plan. You have their basically updated plan, which they're calling a comprehensive transportation plan. Fourth document, which has Kim Lee Horn's logo on it, shows different Waxall Parkway alignments that were done at the town, at the town staff's request circa 2010, but was never taken to the board for action. And so, the challenge that this creates from a land use and planning perspective is when we say, well, how does the Waxall Parkway get built? First question I ask is, which Waxall Parkway? Okay? Second question, or con, now comment, was, roads generally get built one in two ways, via public money, via private money, maybe some combination of the two, so that's the three ways. To me, in order for the private, uh, sector to participate, a reference in our ordinances back to a transportation map is very helpful, as we're setting expectations of where roads are going. Quite frankly, what's the developer's expectation, whether it be to set aside, reserve right away, to a point that we wanna take it on? Is it that we start negotiating and trying to kind of have them build some of it? I don't know, and I'm not necessarily intending to get into that today. What I am trying to stress is that we have one plan, and the plan, or one, one plan map, and that map that I would recommend would be the comprehensive transportation plan. It's this document, which is intended to replace the thoroughfare plan, which is, which is a... And the reason being is, this, the map that I'm holding up right now is the only map of the four, and quite frankly, five, of Union County did a transportation plan, that has what I'll say, real money attached to it. This is a federally required map that our local NPO is required by, by law to produce. And a lot, if not, I'll say 95 to 98% of the transportation planning that occurs in this region has been done off of this map. And so, the CTP, which I've, this is just the Waxall inset, there's a larger version that has all the roads on it from other municipalities, is intended to replace the thoroughfare. So my recommendation is that we would, in our ordinances, UDO, in the UDO specifically, adopt the CTP as our one map. There is a caveat. You go to this document. Here is a yellow alignment for the Waxall Parkway, the southern blue, that was, that was done in 2010, 2011. That, it would be my recommendation that that yellow alignment get added to the CTP document. So that it sets an expectation for developers and members of the community of where do we think our roads, our, our big roads, our thoroughfares are gonna be in the future. And so, no one can say that they were surprised, and quite frankly, we can start really planning for those roads. And when I say planning for those roads, a part of that is ensuring that we're not approving development plans that are in the path of those roads.
So I know you've been working on the Waxall Parkway all the way around.
That's correct.
That's something you plan to bring to the board?
So, I intend...
Or is this a final look at it?
Well, no, I, I intend to bring a, a trimmed-down version of this document, mainly just with the yellow, to the board with, with a more complete explanation of what it's intended to accomplish, and, and kind of my recommendation, again, that we make it to the CTP. Yes, sir?
Dennis.
All right, so, well...
What's the rest, what are you gonna do with the rest of the, the northern part?
Well, the northern part is already on the CTP. So if you see...
Which, which version, though?
Which version gets on here?
So...
Red, yellow, green?
What's on there is a red.
The red.
The red.
That's the version you're gonna state? That's your final choice?
On the northeast side, quite frankly, the blue seems like it's maybe the preferred alignment because of some conversations, quite frankly, Warren has been having with members of the developing community. So I could, I could bring all and clarify which portions and pieces.
Yeah, it's, it's so important, this is the backbone.
Absolutely.
For the future land use plan, which is the backbone for the comprehensive plan, which is the document that needs to be produced in the UDO.
So, so, question?
Yes, absolutely.
Do I get an opinion?
Sure.
The one thing that I have a problem with the red on the north is, we need a separated grade of the railroad track, and that one doesn't provide, which the blue one does, so. It can be, there's a compromise there, is what I'm saying. When you go in with it, I mean, safety-wise, we need a separated grade someplace for the fire truck to get across the railroad track.
I'd agree.
So you're talking about the western side?
Yes, they say west, they say east.
Well, I, I knew what you, I knew what you said.
Well, both sides, I mean, e, east could be easy, I mean...
Right, it's a bridge, there's no, nowhere to get off.
There's no, the, the railroad track, the sep, the railroad track isn't right up against the Hawk 75 on the eastern side.
Gotcha.
On the west, it has to go over the, the highway and, and then loop around and come back.
Gotcha.
Okay, sir.
So, once, once we get this finalized and bring this back, it'll be this, at a regional level, we're gonna get rid of this and use the county's version, or what?
At a regional level, I still recommend that this is the document.
I'm sorry, but I thought you said that the, the county, yeah, I think we're saying the same thing, the county has, is using that, right?
The county, yeah, they, they've used this as their base, their base document to create their multi-modal transportation.
And so we're using that as a base for the regional plan as well, we're just getting rid of this.
That's, that's correct.
But he wants to have the new lane feather around to that now?
Right, no, yeah, yeah.
Because the, this CTP currently is a draft format, and in about a month or so, we're gonna open up a public input period, a public comment period, and if you, uh, you know, if you approve kind of the directional change that I'm referencing, I would submit the southern... I would submit the southern loop as an alignment to add and clarify that northeastern portion of the loop as well. So that it's clear what Waxall's interests are around thoroughfare planning. And it makes it to the document that is in the funding conversation loop.
And by doing that, we align the county into the state, to the region into the state?
That's correct.
Which is terrific.
That's correct. But I want to be clear kind of in the next peak, in the next statement that I make, that transportation planning, when the rubber meets the road is where it really matters. And when I mean rubber meets the road, and it's no pun intended, it's when we have a development plan and we have a roadway that are in conflict with one another. That's really where I think we're gonna sort out what our true values are. Because you're likely to hear a lot of negative feedback about, I could develop my project but for that road. And so it becomes a priority based decision on how do the two coexist? Some believe that one should go away. Some believe the other should go away, some believe the two should coexist. But that becomes a very difficult decision to sort out. I just want to prepare you all for the type of feedback that you may receive from people who are otherwise impacted by those lines that are on the map.
So back to the Kimley Horn thing that they've got the scoring on. What are they looking at? What have they shoved in as the scoring that we got on the state thing for the Waxall Parkway out of this map?
So sixteen has been submitted?
Uh huh.
Which is not on, not on their 2011 document. Sixteen is right here, sixteen's been submitted.
Right.
Right? A portion of Waxall Parkway was, it has been submitted to another plan that you have to have included in order to get the funding conversation. So Waxall Parkway is not necessarily in the ranking criteria just yet, not in that conversation. But it's currently in all of the documents that it needs to be in to get ranked. So we can, the next time the call for projects come up, we can submit it and note that it's in all of the proper, the proper documents that are required that it shows up in.
And to have it there, some of the conversations that are going on with developers looking at the land use on that side, by giving our, and Warren, you could probably help me with this. By tying the land use, the fact that yes, this is a project that the state is interested in, the development side is looking at and saying, hey, we might, we might, not only might, we will help with that, which then bumps that up further. And that's why these things coming together are so, so important.
Yeah, and the point about kind of where we approve development plans and if they're in the path of some of these roads, that also sends a message back to some of these organizations that have influence over funding decisions that, well, if you guys are serious about transportation planning, why are you approving subdivisions that are in the way? And, you know, that's a tough, that's a tough question to try to field. Quite frankly, I've had to field that question mucky. So just moving very quickly through, I think that at some point, and we've talked kind of around this topic, but I wanted to bring kind of a comprehensive transportation plan. Sorry for kind of the name confusion. That's much different than the map that I've shown you. But what is it? What kind of document? What's its intended purpose? A lot of it's really built around how to convey community values around street cross-sections. Do we want trees in the land strip? If so, what kind? How big do we think sixteen should be when it grows up? How big should Waxall Martin be when it grows up? And what should it look like? A lot of those documents are intended to answer those types of questions and also assign a certain level of conceptual cost to what it may take to get there. That's one from Holly Springs, if I'm not mistaken. I'll bring one from Charlotte. This was actually the policy document, Urban Street Design Guidelines, that really spoke to certain street classifications. What were the design expectations? When I say design expectations, I mean, planning strip widths, sidewalk widths, tree types. Should there be bike lanes? Do we want transit? What should the transit look like? Do we want bus shelters? Where should they go? How should they go in there? So that, those are the types of documents that are found in a comprehensive transportation plan. I do think it's a worthwhile effort that we take that on. That may not be the highest priority item right now if we're really trying to sort out priorities, but it's intended to address some of those types of questions. I know schools are very important. Schools own policies come up as different, as different kind of tools to address how we're working with schools. All of that type of information could be accomplished in a broader comprehensive transportation plan. Greenway coordination as well could go in there.
And would you anticipate then, once you get to transportation plan, the comprehensive plan done, that would then sunset any transportation discussions in the various area plans? Highway sixteen corridor, some of the neighborhood plans that talk about connectivity and so?
It could.
Okay. Cause what I'm thinking of is would make the Meeshu thing very confusing. We had a CRTPO plan, we had a Highway sixteen corridor plan, we had, we had the local area regional transportation plan that were in conflict.
Plan is identity.
Yes.
Instead of brand. Just some other topics, these are more traffic engineering related. We haven't talked about this kind of stuff, but what's kind of on Dennis is mine. Kind of traffic, the pet safety. Now, how are we addressing pedestrian crossings? Do we have any sort of standard criteria around that sort of stuff, street calling? We have some policy language that exists today, but I don't think it's been reviewed in a number of years. Neighborhood street signs and markings. So do we want a certain level of consistency around the street names and markings? A lot of that can be found in those kind of standards and construction manual documents. But these, I think broadly fall under kind of a traffic and pet safety program, right of way management. What do we do with paper right of way? What's our process around right of way abandonment? How can you use right of way? Can people access right of way? These are usually handled under a broader right of way management kind of philosophy. So I'll put what's missing, cause I've said an awful lot. And what I've said has really focused on one functional divisionary. We tie this back to kind of the earlier slide. And if you remember from my earlier statement this morning, one of the most important things, if not the most important thing that I'm also, that I'm working on in my opinion is this right here. Those are the zoning rules. Again, one of the core requirements of a municipality is to do planning zoning as a functional area. Won't spend any more time on this other than just to show that visual. Questions?
So only because of the board and committee I support. Economic Development Strategic Operating Plan. Is that a superset out of what the ERC, how much ERC does as their plan?
Quite frankly, it's trying to organize a lot of what's going on there and making that recommendation to Warren. Cause I'll tell you, here's been my, here are my impressions kind of of economic development as a, one, just as a subject matter. It's very broad.
Right.
And so when I say economic development, that could mean some completely different use. Some people think, well, how easier your permit process? That's very economic development. From a developer perspective, cause prior to coming to town Waxall, I worked ironically enough for Carolina's healthcare. And I looked at a lot of land deals and I kind of said, well, alright, so if we were gonna invest there, what's the quality of infrastructure? The quality of the infrastructure had an impact on economic development. So from that perspective, it was completely different. Our permit process is clear. That's important too, because time is money. But the number one question I'll say I've gotten asked on this side of the table from a regulatory perspective, when a developer walks in, they're like, do you have words? Right? So if you don't, that's a pretty big challenge from an economic development perspective. Now, to drop that down kind of more detailed, my general impression is, you know, we have a staff member that's very responsive to different committees that somehow or another have functional responsibilities around economic development as a broader topic. Not so sure it's in a very targeted manner. And so what I asked him to do was try to, try to bring some organization around what he thinks the functional purposes are of the different committees. Consolidate that information. Can we make it actionable, what you're being asked to do and tie it back to the comprehensive plan? And then make that a recommendation to Warren. Hey Warren, here's what we think the town's vision is around economic development, mainly coming from the comp plan. Here's what we think we're being asked to do at a committee level. We've organized it a certain way and tried to make it actionable. So it's really a strategic operating plan that we can say at the end of the year, did we hit goal, A, B, and C? Now, that may not ever make it out, but the point is, if, I kind of believe that if we didn't take that initiative, I don't know if we will ever be able to consolidate it in a timely manner. Those rules are mine. Sorry for the long and an answer, but it's trying to explain a lot of information pretty quickly. Yes, sir.
So again, back to the picture you're gonna talk about, the picture will go with the street scene at the top and then the technical thing at the bottom, that there. My thought is whatever you present to us or bring to us, we've now learned that the top thing gave us unintended consequences.
It can, any and all of them can, quite frankly. One of the primary differences between the two? Right now, the zoning law says, you absolutely have to do this. Can't really apply any sort of professional judgment to it. This is what you do. Doesn't matter what problems it creates.
But that was created by non-PEs.
Well, and it was a plant, it was a planning level cross-section. And that's not an indictment on planning. What it is, at a, at a, at a planning level, you can say, you know what? I want my rooms in my house to be a certain color, blue. That was in your, you were planning for that. And you bought 20 cans of paint thinking that they were all mixed the same way. You turn out to have a different blue. So now rubber's meeting the road. Do you take all 20 of them back or do you paint your house a little bit, that room a different color blue? Maybe you choose to move forward and paint it a different color blue and you're okay with that. But you made some level of judgment of, does that blue work for you? Right now, that's not built into the process. It's take all 20 cans back. And so one of the challenges that creates is from a customer service perspective, I've heard feedback and I think others have too, staff's very difficult to work with. Can't get anything done. Well, okay, that could be a customer service issue, but that also could be a code issue where certain, certain decisions are very much bound by a process that doesn't allow for any kind of professional judgment. It's you do this, and if you want to do anything different, you go through a multi-month process to get a decision that you don't really know which way it's likely to go. And it's not, I'm not trying to be critical, I think that's just.
And I'm not asking, I guess what I'm asking you is, when you bring it to us, it's my thought is, number one is based on PE and the number two, it should be, and again, I get this is not, you know, completely possible, but it's limited unintended consequences as possible.
That's correct. Cause the overarching goal, if I were to bring you something different, any errors are gonna be made in that direction to protect this. And so there's a certain level of, quite frankly, professional judgment and professionalism associated with it. So if our table leads us to a 20-foot drop-off where somebody gets hurt, I would think most people would want me to raise my hand and say, you know what? That's not what we want. How about we take that table and slide it over five feet so that people aren't falling off 20 feet? I think most folks would say that's common sense. But generally, I found that elected bodies and the public, quite frankly, want folks at a staff level that are gonna raise their hands and say, wait a minute, see a red flag. Now, here's how we, here are different alternatives of how we get to a better solution. But if right now we're not, if we don't have the ability to even raise our hands and say, you know, kind of foul on the play, then we can get some pretty unintended outcomes. It may not be good for this right here.
And that's different than the way we've operated. And so if you have to have a comfort level with that, that we're not gonna run wild and just, you know, the whim of the day. Like Dennis said, we may bend a little bit here and there in order to not sacrifice on the public safety, health, and well-being side of that. Cause that is the most critical. But you have to trust our judgment that we're able to make those decisions. And that's, I mean, that's different than.
Well, and notion of side of that though, from my perspective, is that the seats are always gonna be here. The people are gonna be different in the seats. And the thought process and decision-making is gonna be different with different people. So we have to be real careful that we don't separate too much or divide.
But to be fair, that's in fact what I said earlier today though, the difference between a mission and a vision. My thought is, is the mission is not gonna change no matter whose butts are in these seats. Cause the mission of the town is the mission of the town government to provide what it stated here at the beginning. The, I wanna quote it correctly, but that's gonna not change no matter who's in these seats. Now, the vision, I'll give you that, every two years, there could be a completely different vision. And that's the multiple one in my mind at least. That's why I think mission should be first as opposed to a vision first. The mission's not gonna change.
Yeah, I understand that. And I think we all, everybody will understand that if they're elected or hired in a staff position. But you know as well as I do, as time goes on and there's totally a whole different crew in these things, I'm talking 10, 15, maybe 20 years down the road, you know, we need to be careful of the decision if we make now.
Right.
That the board is going to be the five people that vote on it. That's just, that's just something I'm looking at.
And I've said it before, I'm at a point where I don't know that I would want to relinquish so much from coming away from this board to the staff level. Because as I said, you know, staff's not elected anything, we are. But at the same point, I'm still kind of, you know, reckoning in my mind by letting that go a little bit, that we are making the right decisions going forward.
I think you have to look at this as a temporary action. And that's what it is. Because we are in the process, 12 months, 18 months, we'll have a unified development ordinance in place that will address many of these issues. And that's the permanent fix to this. Now, I don't think it'll cover all of it unless we're willing to go in and do a down and dirty, you know, detailed survey of what's in the downtown area so that we can identify every condition and every constraint and do a UDO that works to these, you know, five million areas. For what we're doing right now, I mean, I think we're putting it in the hands of the people who have more knowledge. But what we have to do is stay after the development ordinance that makes it, you know, codifies what we think is important.
I agree with you too, Phil, on that. At one point though, we're gonna have to grab hold of that fuse Band-Aid and look underneath compound three.
That's right.
And understand, I mean, you know, again, the fact that the fire department won't turn a hydrant on because they're afraid they can't turn it off.
That's correct.
That could be a problem.
I understand.
And I agree with you, Stuart. You can't relinquish everything to staff. Cause we don't want that and that's not the, so there's got to be some kind of balance. And you don't like, you don't know that you're gonna sit here years down the road and you can't put something in place that you can't, that's difficult to reverse. So there's definitely a balance in that whole.
It is. And that's what I was trying to get to, the balance. Because I think in this room is probably the best staff and. this room is probably the best staff and and even board, excluding my son.
Yeah.
In a good way, but but now, but like I'm saying, that balance is, we're not gonna go forward, you could have a board that's all wackos in about fifteen years, I'm not gonna be here, but.
You could have some staff that are wackos, too.
Well, I don't know. No comments on that, if I may offer, just coming from the federal side, um, the Air Force was taking a lot of its positions and civilianizing them, because they recognize that a lot of military members are gonna come in for shorter periods of time, and there are certain functions within the organization that need continuity, that need consistency and need reliability, so it may be a good idea for the board to go through and exercise to identify, what are those things that really need to remain constant, and does it make sense for the staff to have the empowerment on those things, and what are those visionary things that we need to keep control over and, um, make sure that we're doing what we need to do as a board? So just taking a hit from the federal side, they they saw the value of, um, really civilian civilianizing a lot to get that consistency, so just to offer that as a model.
And I think on that part, I think that was our answer to that, or not that, giving Warren, was our answer to that, that we want it constant, we want it consistent, and this is the short, the the short long-term answer.
Yeah, but but we gotta be careful to, for instance, it's not like we're throwing everything over the transom.
Right.
And and then, oh, you did good or you didn't do good. I mean, this bound, I, back to what Prosser said this morning, you know, we gotta be cognizant of the amount of time it takes, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to realize it's gonna take months, some years, to get this stuff really working, and, you know, to the extent that, I think what he's trying to say is, no matter what we got on our plate, this is probably mission number one, or or very close to it, at least from their perspective, we wanna accept that recommendation and and kind of begin to address that because of the ripple effect, and, you know, we'll probably walk and learn and stumble a little bit, but, you know, get back up and pull another Band-Aid off.
Has anyone, um, maybe had, maybe have, has anyone ever seen a sidewalk look maybe like a light pole that's in the middle of sidewalk?
Yeah, down south.
We've seen one today when we go down Waxall Martin.
It doesn't, it goes around, it doesn't.
No, the New Daycare.
Yep.
Where they put the sidewalk in it, then it do a telephone pole.
Yeah, sometimes, um, a lot of times, quite frankly, that condition occurs, uh, and I've, I've seen a lot of it, because there's this, there's a belief around how prescriptive do you wanna be with outcomes, or how prescriptive do you wanna be with the process? So the difference being, do you want the sidewalk exactly eight feet from the back of the curve, the entire property frontage, no matter what? Because if you do, pour concrete around light poles. But if you, if you want it eight feet up until it hits a conflict point, and you want someone or a combination of people to exercise some, some, some thinking and say, how do we get around that light pole? That's, that's, that's a, that's a, that's, that's a decision that that a lot of people wrestle with, and some people believe that if we meander around that light pole, we've broken the law, because it absolutely says it's just gotta be eight, nine, or twelve.
And that is very similar to what we talked about earlier with personnel, the board's setting the broad, and then with what your comfortable, the staff coming back and defining that. And that's, I think that's exactly the sort of thing we're trying to, and there is a comfort level, and there's gotta be things in place to where, you know, we're held accountable for, we're doing what we're saying we're doing, how we say we're gonna do it, so that's, we haven't even talked about this.
And I mean, one way to build that comfort and that trust, quite frankly, is as these things come up on very specific project levels, you know, different decisions can kind of be taken to the board in maybe a workshop format, to say, here's, here's what the requirements were, here's what the request was, here, here's, here was the decision, and and the fourth step is the outcome, are we getting the outcomes that we wanted based off of all of those variables? Because what's on paper, it's rarely what's out in the field.
It's not lost on me, it's on you. We put it, we put it on the sheet, and you gotta. That's right, that's right. Uh, and the chief has been very, very patiently waiting at him to, at the getaway car, yes, and.
I would like to say something. I'm a happy man. This is something I've been looking for since I got elected two years ago.
Me too.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna take a little trip, and I guess we can leave the stuff here and come back after we get out. We're not gonna be here in the morning.
Yeah, yeah, um, so is that the last?
Yeah, 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 the trip will be the last thing we do.
Probably about thirty minutes.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. We should be back in about.
What time you got, leave at four thirty?
Oh, God, we're not gonna be back in. You gotta leave at four thirty?
Huh?
You gotta leave at four thirty?
Yeah, you gotta go do what I.
I give you five seconds for tomorrow. Right?
Let's see.
It's a corner turn today, but I give you five seconds.
I'll see what.
Why don't we, why don't we ride some and then drop him back off?
Okay.
And then we can go finish that.
We need, we'll come back up this way.
I don't have, you don't have my hotel, oh, my seat.
We're gonna leave everything here.
And that's good enough?
If they show back, then we get down and go ahead and put the car down.
So what do you want me to do?
Come with, and you'll drive me off?
Yeah, we're gonna drop you off at four thirty.
Can you drive me off at four thirty?
Yeah. What we do is go down this road, go down the bar, and then we drop you off, and then we do it.
All right, sounds good.
You got that, Dennis?
So is that your bag?
We're gonna do this back here.